Actually, so for all good, shall we go ahead and start the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, February 11th. Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey.
All righty.
All right. I think item number three, just my first selectman's updates. I mean, obviously, some of the things I want to update you on is on the agenda later today. Just want to highlight, we've started our, well, first of all, the town meeting, which is the state of the town, which is on Wednesday at seven o'clock. So I encourage people to attend that. That is basically just a review of where we are. It's required by the town charter. We're not voting on anything. It's just an opportunity, I give a presentation. It's pretty similar to the last couple of years. We usually hold it in the Hammond Asset Room and it's also on Zoom. And just encourage the public to attend. If you can't, it'll be recorded. And the PowerPoint presentation is always available online afterwards. So it just kind of summarizes where we are in town, all the great things that have been happening and some of the challenges that we face. So I want to remind people of that. We're also in the process of going through budget workshops. And we have another one scheduled on Wednesday. Also, the Board of Education will be presenting to the Board of Selectmen their recommended budget. And we'll be continuing the budget calendars posted, I think, on the Finance Department website and as well as on the town calendar. So there's lots of opportunities to listen in. And there'll be a public hearing, I think, the end of March, once we move forward to the Board of Fin- and then the Board of Finance goes through its deliberations. And then voting day is May 6th. So I just wanted to provide those updates. Moving on to liaison reports of selectman comments.
For now.
I have one quick, just notice that the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to start a review of their zoning regulations. And so kind of to kick that off, on February 20th, it's a Thursday, they are hosting a community housing forum. And that's going to be at the Madison Senior Center, beginning at 7:00 PM. So that's a great opportunity for folks to come out and learn a little bit, but also if they have any comments or concerns they'd like to make or suggestions they'd like to make in regards to things, especially like affordable housing, that would be a great opportunity for their participation.
A great point, Jen. I've gotten a couple of questions about that new development and who should they contact? So I'd send them to either you or to Hope Partnership, but maybe this is a great forum to have them join. So I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, and the Chair of Planning and Zoning will be joining us later today, you know, to talk about the housing forum and the process for the zoning regulation updates too. People who are attending are interested in hearing kind of her update to us as well. So that's later in this meeting. Al, you have any comments or no? Okay, all right. Moving on to citizens' comments. I know we have, looks like we have a few people. And so just would like to please ask that you keep your comments to two minutes or less and state your name and address for the record. Go ahead, John.
Good morning, John Rasmussen, for Governor's Way.
Morning, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, just wanted to make sure. I asked that the Board of Selectmen table items 7A and 7B, the two appointments to Madison Youth and Family Services Board. I think this, these items should be moved to an evening meeting. I know there were a lot of people that wanted to weigh in on this. And being an eight o'clock Tuesday morning meeting, they weren't able to. So that's number one. Number two, I think all of the Board of Selectmen should interview and meet all the candidates for these positions and tabling those items would allow for that. I don't question whether the two candidates that are on the agenda are qualified. I just know that Lisa Dean is the most qualified. And I believe she is being dismissed because of her political affiliation. And I think all five Board of Selectmen members know this. The opioid epidemic should be the number, one of the top issues for Youth and Family Services. And Lisa Dean has done more than anyone in this state in that regard. And even at the national level, she's probably one of the top advocates on this issue. And again, this should be one of the top issues of the board. Think anyone, if there's anyone that's done more in Washington and at the state Capitol on this issue, no one in this, in this meeting room has done more than Lisa has done. So again, I ask that these, these appointments, again, I applaud the two members, the two candidates for stepping up, but I think this has to be reviewed. And I'd like to see it table to next meeting for that purpose. Thank you.
Dennis Crow.
Good morning, this is Dennis Crow, 141 Twilight. I'd like to express in the strongest possible terms my actual outrage over the Board of Selectmen refusal to appoint Lisa Dean to the Madison Youth and Family Services. We believe this was all orchestrated by Peggy Lyons and Joan Walker. And I believe that the others just danced to the tune. Scott and Al just went along with it. What makes this so blatantly offensive is you claimed it was concern over national politics. You told this to people. And that pretense is offensive. It's insulting, actually. Nobody knew that that possibility even existed, that Lisa Dean would go on there, except for the people that you told. And that those people were told what concerns you wanted them to have. You manipulated the concern. You handpicked the new candidates after receiving Lisa's application and even moved one candidate from the Economic Development Commission to this to ensure that you got the people that you wanted. As a candidate for state rep, Lisa ran a campaign that was completely unconnected to national politics. She ran primarily on fighting opioids and on cost cutting. Giving her founding and running of that organization, Demand Zero, fighting opioid use is obviously her passion. The Madison Youth and Family Services website, to John Rasmussen's point, they show a large graphic and surveys about opioid use. That is their concern too. Lisa is a perfect fit in that group. So there's no explaining this power politics decision away. You did this, quote, "because we can." So the days of friendly minority status are over. This is going to be a turning point in town politics, and I think you'll regret this decision. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised online. Okay, thank you. There's also opportunity at the end of the meeting for public comment. So moving on to item number six, the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Moved.
Okay, you guys are both muted, just so you know. Any-
Moved. I'm not muted.
Oh. We had seconds though, okay. So any other comments or questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, hearing no objection, I'll raise our hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Motion moves. Okay, item number seven, discuss to take action to appoint A Drew Siletty to the Youth and Family Services Board for a term expiring on January 1st, 2028, and Sandy Verucci to the Youth and Family Service Board for a term expiring on January 1st, 2029.
Moved.
Second.
Okay. So I guess discussion, I think, obviously, we've heard some very strong opinions on this. And, and I will say, this has caused a lot of honest conversations that we've had just individually with each other, which I think is important to have a dialogue. I think I've learned from those conversations and I hope that my colleagues would also hear and learn from those conversations. Well, I'm sympathetic to people's passions and concerns. I'm, I think the bottom line is we have three great candidates to fill two slots right now on what is a very popular board in town. People wait years to serve on Youth and Family Services. And I do feel we are pointing to highly qualified, the most qualified and well-positioned candidates to serve the mission at this time. This does not take away from all the applicants, but it just, this is kind of where we are. We're making a decision now, but there's going to be opportunities to serve in the future. Our board has always been committed to ensuring a variety of voices are represented on all boards and commissions. And that includes representations by Republican applicants and unaffiliated applicants. Good government includes a balanced point of view. So I think that all applicants, regardless of party affiliation, should be considered equally, whether they apply through the RTC, the DTC, or directly to the Board of Selectmen. And we often have a system that penalizes those people who are not active in a political organization. Unaffiliated voters make up 43% of the town's registered voters, yet hold less than 20% of all seats on town boards and commissions. Because many people don't want to go through the party system, but they feel obligated to in order to get an appointment. So I know we talked about this last year because we've had other kind of times where we've been a bit, you know, a disagreement on this about how to move candidates forward. And I know Bruce and Al, we're going to work together to come up with some options. They have done some research, I know, and are in the process of doing that. I remain committed to finding that way where we can kind of get, take out some of the contentiousness of this, because people are very passionate and they want to serve. And we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to do that. So I just would highlight that, you know, I want to continue to move those conversations forward about an alternative process than what we have now. And, and also just know that we will continue to support all candidates serving our boards. This isn't anything related to one party or another because of somebody's political status. So those are my comments.
I have a statement to read in from Bruce, since he wasn't able to join us today. And then I have a statement for myself as well. So I'll start with Bruce's, if that's okay.
Yep.
Okay, so from Bruce, he says, "Madison has a proud history of volunteerism in our town that values different perspectives and above all, made sure those in minority had meaningful input. It was understood that every individual contributes a unique voice, enriching our town through their distinct experiences and ideas. It also acknowledged the reality that in a small community, our common ground is much stronger than whatever is going on in the national news. When people are marginalized or dismissed because of their political beliefs, we limit our collective potential and compromise the fairness necessary for progress. Unfortunately for all of us, under the current administration, Peggy, Al, and Scott have cast this value aside. We now have yet another instance of a qualified and enthusiastic volunteer passed over due solely to the party affiliation on her voter registration. You may hear other reasons offered, but she was not even considered. And when you cut through the excuses, you are left with one thing. She belongs to the wrong party. This is not the first time, and by now, the message is clear. If you do not agree with them or dare to challenge them, your voice is not welcome in Madison. The irony is that at a time when DEI is making headlines, this is a local attack on the core principles behind the ideal of diversity, equity, and inclusion. By rejecting individuals based on politics, we also reject at a fundamental level, the idea of diversity. Equity demands some sort of parity in voices heard. When the majority party refuses to champion this ethic, our chance for mutual understanding and shared growth disappears. When we push any group away because we might not like what they have to say, we abandon all pretext of inclusion. We make it normal to silence others based on perceived differences and justify it with the simple excuse, because we can. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Wilson."
Okay. Okay. Let me, let me clear my voice. And I'll just read mine into the record. "In Madison, I believe that good governance begins with a fair and transparent process for selecting candidates to serve on our town committees. I am proud to champion principles of transparency, meritocracy, and inclusive representation that reflect the diverse perspectives of our community. Recently, the town received candidate applications to fill two open positions on the Board of Madison Youth and Family Services. The town Republican Committee recommended one candidate and the Democratic Town Committee made a recommendation of two candidates. Where my concern lies is with the candidate selection process and not the candidates themselves. We are fortunate to have so many well-qualified volunteers in our town, and I consider having too many great candidates a good problem to have. However, as previously stated, it is the selection process that causes my concern. When the Board of Selectmen received our draft agenda for today's meeting, candidates for the positions had already been selected and decisions were made without input from the Republican members of the board. I was deeply concerned to learn that the Democrats cited discomfort with appointing a Republican candidate due to decisions made at the national level by the current presidential administration. Local governance should not be overshadowed by national politics. Decisions about who serves on our committees must be based on merit, qualifications, and a commitment to serving our town, not political affiliation or national narratives. Disregarding qualified candidates based solely on a party alignment sow seeds of distrust and fosters division within our community. Instead, we must embrace the diverse experiences and professional expertise of all community members to bring vibrancy and strength to our local government. To ensure fairness and transparency to the process, we must create new pathways. Ideas for consideration could include establishing a nonpartisan interview panel for unaffiliated candidates to mean impartiality in their selection process, creating clear and transparent criteria for final candidate selection when there are more applicants than available positions, prioritizing fairness and meritocracy to ensure that the most qualified candidates are chosen, chosen to serve Madison. By setting these principles as our guide, we can foster a sense of unity and respect within our community, ensuring that Madison thrives as a place where all voices are valued and represented. Thank you." Any further comments from the board? I, I think that one takeaway we all should have, and I think the public should have, is we recognize that we look, we're required to operate these appointments through a political system, because that's the way the state statute is written, right? And so it just creates sometimes differing points of view on this. And, and I think we're all trying to do what we think is best for the town. And I think that, I appreciate the statements by our board members. I disagree with some of the comments made, and I've tried to relay that both privately. But at the same point, we have to find, I hope, a better way to do this going forward so that we don't kind of keep having a repeat, whatever direction it is. And I do want to also comment that there has been decisions made, bipartisan decisions, behind the scenes before. We try to keep these out of the public discussion because it's involving residents. You know, we try to respect their privacy and not to drag them into a public discussion. But there are a lot of conversations that do happen behind the scenes to make sure that we're ensuring everybody has an opportunity to serve. So, but I appreciate both Jen and Bruce's comments. Like I said, although I disagree with some of the statements, I do think it's important we all talk about this and we keep the dialogue going. Because I think, to your point, that's the most important thing. We have to be willing to talk to each other. So, so with that, I guess is-
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to say something. I think it's, I think it's important just, you know, beautifully said, by the way. And Jen, I, you know, listen, I appreciate all your thoughts and Bruce's thoughts as well. I think we've had some really wonderful, healthy, respectful dialogues, as we always do on this board, both privately and certainly in public as well. And I think that's the cornerstone of, you know, our democracy and candidly, how well we work together as board members. So sincere appreciation for that, just to start the conversation. And listen, I talked to Connor as well, Connor Favre, the RTC Chair, at length. I know Peggy did as well, at length. And we've had some very, very respectful, open dialogues. And I think that's awesome. That's, that's where we should be. We should be able to have those conversations. I, I want to reinforce that, that this isn't a personal decision at all. This isn't about, in my opinion, about Lisa Dean, Lisa Dean's experience. Lisa's amazing. She, the things she's done at Demand Zero and, and her candidacy is amazing. She's a very qualified candidate. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, we're in a position where we had seven candidates come through our nominations committee, two of them being unaffiliated, so non-party related. And our nominations committee chose those two candidates to be put forward, even over Democratic candidates. And I think that's an important point that we should be putting out there, that, you know, our team chose the unaffiliated candidates before the Democrats. It's also important to point out that one of the candidates, I think Jen, you may have mentioned it, or Bruce may have mentioned it in, in your comments, or maybe Dennis did, pulling out of EDC. Well, that particular candidate was put on EDC because he really wanted to serve the, the town. But his first choice was to join Madison Pub, Madison Youth and Family Services, but there was no position open. So he had been waiting until ultimately a position may have opened up and kept his name in the hat, because that's where he really wanted to serve. Did a year on EDC, you know, to, to give back to the town, but was waiting for this opportunity. So I think that's, that's also important. Listen, this is, this is an amazing situation for us in that we have a wealth of qualified candidates. I don't take anything away from Lisa and all the wonderful things she's accomplished, but I just think, you know, in this particular situation, these two candidates are just more qualified. That's it. It's not a political decision, they're just more qualified. And I think that's, that's a really important thing. And listen, to Peggy's point, I, I think, you know, yes, behind the scenes, we have, we have had some political conversations related to other situations, whether it be the Board of Finance Vice Chair, whether it be the Police Commission. There has been some other compromises made. I can also think back, Bruce, I will, I know you're not here, Bruce, but you'll watch this, I'm sure. But, you know, not allowing the current Chair of the Board of Ed to be the Vice Chair back when the Republicans had the majority as well. So it has been done on both sides. So let's not talk out of both sides of our mouth and suggest that it hasn't either. So, you know, I want to be super, super clear that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we're just picking who we think are the best candidates. And, and that's really it. And I, and I think we should focus on that. We should focus on the merit of the candidates. And again, nothing taking away from what, what Lisa brings to the table. She's wonderful. That's it.
I don't need to prolong this discussion. Jen, I was very impressed with the comments you read to us this morning and as well as Bruce's. And they are lofty principle concepts, which I am in agreement with. At times, the Board of Selectmen is just asked to make a close call. And this is one of those situations in which we have three candidates and two open slots. When it's time for my vote, I keep in mind two simple questions. What's best for Madison? And I have to remind myself that in holding office as a selectman, I need to represent all the people of the town, not just certain sections of the electorate. This is one of those cases where the selectmen are asked to make a judgment. And that's our job, as painful as it might be.
Okay, well, I think obviously a lot of comments made. And once again, appreciate the dialogue and hope we can continue talking to each other. So thank you very much for that. With that then, all in favor approving item seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Yay.
One nay? Okay. All right. And obviously, we have one absent. So, all right, well, thank you for that. Let's move on to item number eight. And that is just an update on the status of the federal grant-funded projects. So, Genie, if you could share my slide, that would be great. And I think one of the things that, when we've had our conversations on the previous topic, the reality is what happens nationally is trickling down locally. The town of Madison has been very fortunate that we have received, and, you know, a number of federal grants for specific projects. And, and we'd also kind of factored into some of our decision-making process, getting some additional tax credits on some installations that we're making at our schools. But unfortunately, with the executive orders, and I'm sure the people watching this have all read the newspaper and we've been following this closely on the news, that has had an impact to us locally. So what's happening nationally is hitting us locally. And it's pretty significant. So we have over $10 million in between grant awards and expected tax credits. And I'll just walk through those projects. I know the board got a more detailed list of where we were on these projects. But the first is we have a grant through FEMA for our Firehouse Expansion Emergency Operations Center. That's basically the project that's going on at the Madison Hose Building. We have a $2.5 million federal grant that we received. That's a, that's a grant that we have an actual document, documented contract with the federal government for that funding. We don't know the status of that. The Department of Energy, the emergency shelter that we're, generator, we have $1 million from the Department of Energy. And in your packet, you'll see that we received a letter from the Department of Energy stating that our project would be under review to see if it aligned with the Trump's, the Trump administration's DEI mandates. So this is a project that is to pay for a generator that's really infused at the heart of our Paulson HVAC project. Because we have to redo all the electrical at Paulson and we factored in installing this generator. So it's going to have a big impact on the timeline if we don't get word whether or not we're going to be able to proceed with this grant. Once again, signed contract with the federal government. These were all approved last year. So, and that will be on our agenda for the next meeting in February, to talk more about that project, because we as a town might have to make some decisions about moving forward with that project, whether or not the grant is secured. The Department of Justice, our police social worker position, that is funded through a grant through the Department of Justice. We received a notice pausing the ability to get refunded for the hiring of the police social worker. So this is, was a partnership between Madison Youth and Family Services and the Police Commission. This individual started with us several weeks ago. And we received notice from the DOJ that we may not get reimbursed for any funds expended for this position. Now, since then, because of the court order, the Department of Justice is at least following the court order. And they've opened up the reimbursement portal. So we've been actively submitting any kind of payroll receipts and everything to make sure we get reimbursed from the grant. But once again, we don't know where this is really going to go moving forward. So we're going to, we might have to have some conversations at the board level. I think the town, you know, we've made a commitment to bring this position on. It was something that was supported throughout the budgeting process. And we opted to go for a grant as an opportunity to kind of test drive the position and make sure it was going to be the way we wanted it to be and it was going to be effective. So that's a, that's, that's somebody's livelihood that is being impacted by these decisions. Obviously, Academy, the USDA grant. You know, we received the grant agreement and voted on it. We had a special meeting and I was really, you know, glad we all came together, both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, to move this forward. We submitted everything. We were told by the department that everything had been submitted for obligation. And then the pause came. And we're kind of frozen in time right now. And even though the courts have ordered the departments to keep facilitating and moving forward on things, the reality is that the federal government is paralyzed right now because of everything going on from a personnel standpoint. So we don't know where, or where we are in the USDA grant. And then finally, the Inflation Reduction Act. And then finally, the Inflation Reduction Act had these things called clean energy tax credits. And since we're a municipality, we don't get a tax credit, we basically get a check written to us for the to reimburse us for installing climate friendly systems, non fossil fuel. And we put in a geothermal system at town campus this last year. And then we're install, we installed, and we're in the process of installing a geothermal system at Neck River Elementary. Town campus, we were hoping to get back $800,000. And if you recall, this board actually approved an appropriation upfront with the hope that we were going to get this reimbursement. We don't know where the funding is for the Inflation Reduction Act. The current administration has publicly said that they want to basically defund this entire act. So there's $800,000 at stake for the town campus geothermal project. And then there's another $2.5 million or 2.2 million, or whatever the number is around that for Neck River Elementary that we were expecting to get reimbursed for. We can't haven't been able to apply for that yet because the system isn't commissioned. So we're going to continue to do this. We don't know. We'll put, we're going through all the process to for the application process. But some of the executive orders, we're pausing this. And then we know that there's is is a intention to defund anything related to IRA. So I think it's just important, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna work through each of these things. I think we'll find a common ground and figure out how to do it. But it is very disruptive for these projects, for some of them in particular, because we're at decision points right now. So I've been, obviously, the last two weeks, and I'll be honest, it's been very stressful because, you know, trying to understand what's going on, it's chaotic at the federal level. And that is causing chaos at the local level. So I guess I just wanted to highlight that, you know, these steps being taken are going to impact us, the taxpayers of Madison. And I'm hoping it's not going to be as bad as this. I don't think all these grants are going to go away. One would hope the federal government will honor contracts that have been signed with us. And that we can continue forward with these projects, but the timing is horrible. The Department of Energy Emergency Shelter Grant, we're supposed to be going out to bid for the generator in in March. So our board is going to have to make some tough decisions towards the end of this month. So I don't think any of us, no matter what our viewpoints had been, you know, leading up to this, anticipated that this would hit things at this level where we had signed contracts. And I think that is what's really a struggle for me right now. So and hopefully, as we work through over the next couple of months, it won't be the case. You know, we will, those will be recognized as, you know, through the court system. But it's just going to put a little uncertainty into us from some of these projects. And and our board will be meeting on some of these more specifically to take a deeper dive in later this month and probably in March. So I don't know if there's any further questions from board members or comments?
Of time. I mean, I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing at at the town level to navigate this. I know it's not easy, so appreciate it. And hopefully, the public is patient, given the national disruption stuff that's happening.
Okay, all right. Well, that's, like I said, the February 24th, I think, meeting, we'll be talking specifically about both Neck River, just to get an update, which is all great news. The new school is going great. But then also maybe some decisions that we might need to make on the on the emergency generator purchase. So, all right, moving on to item number nine. Discuss and take action to approve the transition of the owner's project management role regarding the Academy Community Center building project from Colliers Project Leaders USA to town staff and to authorize the first selectman to sign all documents and contracts associated with this transition.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, great. Okay, so obviously, you know, a cat, the project is kind of an inflection point right now. Our board adopted a referendum for adopted a timeline to go to referendum May 6. Obviously, given what's going on with the USDA grant, it's unclear whether or not that will be that we'll be able to meet that timeline. But in the meantime, I think we kind of reevaluated the project where we are. And we were at a point in Colliers contract where we thought it made sense to take this in house. We now have a construction manager that we approved in last year's budget. He started with us in July. He's taken on in-house a couple of other projects that we're working on. When we hired Colliers, we didn't have this expertise in town staff, and now we do. And I think he'll bring a lot to the table, as well as our new facilities director as well, who joined us a year ago. So it just makes sense, and it also is going to save us some money on the project, which is clearly budget constrained, right? So I think being able to move forward and and take some of these skills in-house, you know, and transition over to this is the right thing to do right now. Any further comments? No?
Well, I just think, you know, with our in-house construction manager and and our facilities director, obviously, they've been very successful, you know, looking at cost and returning some costs back to the town. So I think there's a tremendous opportunity here, you know, given some of the complexities and and things that are going on that that are unknowns, that they're going to really take a hard look at this project, and and I think we'll all benefit from that.
I agree, Scott. Ben and Peter have been a dynamic duo so far.
Man and Robin.
Yeah, really. I mean, they've given us some great conversations, presentations on other projects that the town has had ongoing. So looking forward to their eyes and their expertise as we move forward on this. And just a question for the Academy School Building Committee itself. I saw this kind of circulating through the committee, through the community. Has the Academy Building Committee paused their meeting schedule at this point?
Yeah.
They paused this next meeting. I think that's a conversation about where we are in the process. It probably doesn't make sense for them to keep meeting in the short term just because we are in a little bit of a bigger pause because of the funding issue as well. That's going to impact timeline. And then, you know, so I think we have to kind of sort out their role at this stage because we're, once again, you know, kind of in a pause mode. And I know Ben is our construction manager, excuse me, has been spending time just getting more up to speed and digging in at a much deeper level of the project now. And and I do also want to thank Colliers for their service the last couple of years. And they're continuing to advise us, as we'll see in a few minutes, on other projects that we're doing here in town. So but but I do want to highlight that, you know, we're appreciative of all the building committee is doing too. And I did consult with the Chair, and the building committee was kind of, you know, told in advance, obviously, that we were going to be taking this step, so.
Peggy, I think the building committee is very appreciative of Colliers' efforts to get us this far. And I think now it's Eric's turn to take it the rest of the way. The building committee is still, of course, very enthusiastic about the project. And when the situation gets clarified, they'll shift back into high gear.
Okay, well, with that, then, I guess, all in favor for item number nine, say aye. Aye, okay, most passes unanimously. And now moving on to item number 10. Welcome, Adam. Discuss and take action to award the following contract for the Neck River Elementary School project to authorize the first selectman to sign all documents and contracts associated with these awards. Pending approval of the ad hoc new school building committee budget of the Neck River Elementary School project. A W Mason for furniture items in the amount of $13,494, $95. B to CW CDW for Promethean interactive display boards in the amount of $142,945. C to Omni Data for network switches in the amount of $165,814. D to Connecticut Communications for phone systems equipment in amount not to exceed $53,485. Vendors on Connecticut State Contract. And E to Presidio Network Solutions Group for network equipment in amount not to exceed $50,000. Vendors on Connecticut State Contract. Can I get a second?
No.
Second, okay, great. All right, great. So this is obviously every meeting now. We're moving along. We're humming along. We're getting close to the school being completed and open. So Adam, if you just want to talk about, these are things obviously that are important for the school to open.
Yes, good, good morning, board members. This is effectively part two continuation from last meeting where we have these larger packages that the project is coming back to the board for confirmation on top of the school building committees, obvious vote of approval. The agenda was written such, because at the time, it was sort of in advance of the school building committee. But all of these motions that before the board today, the underlying quotes and whatnot were just approved by the school building committee last night to sort of confirm that recommendation. So the in the committee packet, there should have been not only the quotes, but the bid fee comparison, as well as my little chart kind of showing what we're looking at today versus what was approved last time versus what's in the future. You know, in the interest of time, I can talk about any of it that you like. The only thing I would point out is that in the second tranche of approvals, we're largely looking at the results from the public bid process for certain components that weren't purchased off of a state contract or similar. In general, the bids were favorable. The expected value for the bids going into the public good process was about $383,000. And aggregate total of the bids to be approved is $308,000. So that was good news and should help with some of the we're seeing a little bit of overages on some of the IT components to be reviewed at later dates. So those generally offset. So all in all, the total project budget line in terms of these scope items is tracking very close to what the estimated was going in and well under the expected budget that we were tracking going into this process. So generally, all good news.
Adam, do we have any risk exposure with tariffs impacting? Is there anything left? You know, I thank goodness we, it's a steel structure building, right? So just imagine if we were sitting here now going out to bid with these steel tariffs that are going in, what that could do. But is there anything left in this project that could be impacted by tariffs?
So this was, this was the topic that came up last night at the school building committee. So we have, we have data from myself and from the construction manager on that. In short, the lion's share of the items to be procured for the project have been procured, and most of them are installed. So you see all the steel, it's the buildings up in terms of structural steel. And moreover, because we only have just a little bit over three months before we're targeting our substantial completion date, which is effectively when the building would legally turn back over to the owner. The owner could use it, the town could use it as a school. Because we're so close to the end, all of the longer purchases, the the big HVAC components, they were purchased a long time ago. So in the same way that for the furniture equipment, I'm getting calls from vendors asking, hey, can I get the PO? Can I get the PO? Because they're concerned about, you know, releasing that that scope on their end. That happened already for the school building. So there's, you know, to say there's no risk is silly. There's always potential risk. And I think the one that the construction manager, Gilbane, has been tracking, but is continuing to track is just availability of, you know, items that were procured. You know, we all went through COVID, and anyone that was doing construction magically found out that they couldn't get a generator or couldn't get a switchgear. Now, thankfully, we have those components procured. We have a switchgear on site. But there's always that potential risk for those, you know, last mile items that until they're literally installed to the building, not so much a cost issue, but just availability issue is something we're monitoring. But even with that, again, we're very close to the end on the lion's share of items. So that risk is diminished than if we were, say, a year out from the end of the job. So again,
Well, it it highlights, I think, though, that, you know, we have a number of other construction projects in the queue. You know, not only is it just the federal grant issue, but now we're going to have to factor in some great uncertainty in terms of tariffs and trade wars and things like that. So another piece of uncertainty that is now impacting us locally for the success of our project. So I know no one has a crystal ball right now. So this one luckily is, we're so close to completion, we've kind of most of those things have run through the system at this stage. And so that's good to hear that we don't have a lot at risk. But I I I think next, you're coming to our board meeting on the 24th, I think, to just talk more about where we are in the actual budget for the school. And we can kind of have a further, deeper dive on that, I know, to talk because now you're at a point now where you have an understanding of contingencies and what's left on the on the list, right? And so we'll look forward to that conversation, you know, in in later this month. Any questions for Adam?
Just a quick one on the Promethean boards. Are those
Yes.
additional ones, are the ones that are currently installed at Jeffrey being redeployed to other buildings or to the new school building?
This did come up as a topic because it's it's a sizable number. So we asked the question and coordinated with the town IT. I will admit, I'm not sure what the final answer was for where the existing boards are going. But the short answer is that the new boards are being procured because of a combination of useful life. And they're being sort of, some of them are at the end of their useful lives, and then the needs at the other schools. And just the the thought about transferring a component to a new building, installing it, having it work for a year, and then having to replace it after eligibility for reimbursement is done. So with those factors in mind, that's why all new boards are being purchased for the school. But as I said here, I don't recall exactly where all all 100% boards were going within the existing school district.
And and we've, I I've had conversations with the superintendent about repurposing as much as possible. My understanding, Adam, and correct me, though, that these Promethean boards are eligible for the partial reimbursement that we get. And that was one of the thinking behind, well, at least we're not paying for the full amount for these. So now we'll have a mix of some, you know, new and old throughout the district wide, right? So but they're, you know, some of them will be repurposed at other schools. And then I know the town has its hand up too, as well as having a few that aren't going to be used by the school district. Obviously, we're not just gonna, you know, give them away. I think there's other places in town, every town facilities that could use them as well, so.
Okay, great. Yeah, that was my only question. Just wanted to make sure if they were still usable, that we were taking advantage of that.
Have one at your house, Jen.
Yes. We should have a board of selectmen Promethean board.
Yeah.
So, all right, with that, then, I guess, all in favor of item 10 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, thank you.
Thanks a bunch.
All right, thanks a lot, Emma. We'll see you next in a couple of weeks. Item number 11. Discuss and take action to award a contract to M. E. O'Brien for playground equipment installation and surfacing as recommended by the facilities department in an amount of $123,532 for the Brown School pre-K decay playground project and to authorize the first selectman to sign all documents and contracts associated with the award. Vendor is local distributor of landscape structure products on the Massachusetts Higher Education Consortium budgeted in fiscal year 2324 and fiscal year 2425 capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Okay, and I don't know if there's any, this is, I don't know, Peter's here, speak to this?
He is, he's coming up.
Okay. I mean, I don't know, are there, you know, any questions that board members have? Nice, nice picture, Peter. Yeah, looks like a wedding picture.
When I get dressed up, I gotta celebrate, so.
Just want to give a quick one second.
At our level, this is the, this is part of the the pre-K rooms that are being done at Brown. I know Ben's on here, too. If he can give you, if he wants to give you a more detailed lowdown on what's going on. This is also part of the expansion of the parking lot, creating a drop off area and also adding into that playground area.
Any questions? No? Okay, all right. Well, I guess with that, then, we'll save you Ben's putting on the spot. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes unanimously. Just excited to see these things continuing to move forward. And as we just heard, it's good to get this stuff paid for now, right, before we have any price risk. So continue to move forward. Item number 12, a discuss and take action to approve releasing funds from the Severance Reserve in an amount not to exceed $41,300 to fund the onboarding costs of four police officers.
So moved.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so basically, this is just because we've had more turnover in the police department. There has been some kind of unforeseen costs associated with that. And, and so it wasn't something we could really budget. I mean, every year we, we kind of budget a little bit to know that we might have a retirement or a resignation. But we've seen a little bit more uptick in turnover. And so that has kind of resulted in some additional costs. So we just want to cover that. And this, and to use money out of the severance reserve requires both Board of Finance and Board of Selectment approval. So any questions on that? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, item number thirteen, discuss and take action to approve the inclusion of Lowry Field in the Old Elm Street Local Historic District. So this was, we talked about this several months ago. And this is relating to this historic district that is being formed along Route One. Lowry Field happens to kind of fall within that. And so Erin, if you can kind of update us where that stands, I know there were some concerns on the board's part about what does that mean for the property if we join the historic district? Does it create limitations?
Hey, should we motion and second it first and then?
Oh, sorry, yeah, yes.
So, so moved.
Second.
Okay, great. Now we're in discussion. And let's have a conversation first, because I know Erin and I, and then Tom Boyle is the chair, right, of our Historic District Commission. So Tom, if you want to, we want to welcome you. And then Erin, if you could just kind of give an overview of this process where we are and what would we be doing if we vote yes? So.
Sure, I, I did, I don't, did everybody get my memo that I sent out on Friday about?
Yes.
This, okay, so that kind of spelled out where we were here.
I think if you could summarize it for the public.
So at this point, the Old Elm Street Local Historic District Committee had completed their report. They, there's a statutory timeline that needs to be followed to establish a historic district. And so the committee has been working to follow that timeline and submitted their study report to both DECD at the state level and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those were mandatory referrals. The Board of Selectmen were also copied, but did not have a statutory requirement at that time. The committee held their informational public hearing on December tenth and received in-person comments and also allowed for any written comments. They were waiting for reports from DECD and Planning and Zoning and have received those mandatory reports. And so now as part of that, every property owner within this proposed district was notified in writing with a summary of what, you know, the boundaries of the district. And that's where the Board of Selectmen got involved at this phase because of ownership of Lowry Field. And the original proposed boundary district came back, I want to say some four hundred feet into Exchange Field along the Post Road. And, and so the committee has now, over the last almost sixty days, received feedback whether some property owners were looking to opt out or modify their boundary lines. And so this, this boundary has changed. And the committee has basically sixty-five days from their public hearing on December tenth to show the final mapping of, of the historic district and mail that, mail ballots out to all of the property owners within this district. So they've gotten the preliminary yea or nay from property owners, have amended this map and need to send this map out with, for a formal vote from the residents. They need two-thirds property owners to vote in favor of this historic district in order for that then to be referred back to the commission for, or excuse me, the board formally for your action on the ordinance and the actual establishment of the district. So before we can jump to that, the board has to act in the ownership capacity and determine whether or not you want Lowry Field to be included in this local historic district. So Tom, it's probably better to run through what's regulated, what's not regulated as far as landscaping or improvements in that sense. But we did have a revised, I can pull it up actually. A revised boundary that has come through and, and reduced the distance of the proposed district. Basically, that it doesn't extend beyond the baseball diamond of Lowry Field into Exchange. So it would run parallel to the Boston Post Road right at that corner, behind the field. And I do actually have the considered a regulated use.
Are you saying behind like the outfield? So like where that road is?
Yeah, I can pull it up on the aerial photo so you can see it. It might be easier. I have an image, but it doesn't have the aerial, so I think the aerial would be more useful. Just share my screen. Okay, everybody can see this now? Okay, so here's, here's the front of Lowry Field on the Boston Post Road and Long Shore Lane runs along the western border. The initial boundary line was going to come at an angle back to the rear of that's, I'm trying to see what number, I think that's three eighteen. Yeah, this property on the corner of Long, of Boston Post Road and Long Shore. So it was going to come at an angle like this. The now revised, proposed boundary will come straight across here, essentially at the dugout. Area.
Not cutting off the dugout behind it, I'm assuming?
What's that?
Behind the dugout, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I'm not sure if Tom, when you drew that map, if you, if you looked at the edge of the, but yes, I mean, that could be adjusted. The, the, the board, if you have concerns as well, you can further adjust this line if you have suggestions or concerns. This, this seemed, since this property is going to be included, it just was the assumption to kind of run from that property line to the corner here. You know, but.
Just know there's a, there's a batting cage back there too, that Little League uses. And, and obviously the dug, the dugout. So I just want to make sure we're advocating for them, that maybe it goes behind those.
Well, includes those.
They would be included in the zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I guess really the question is more, what does it mean in terms of, so if we want to put a new batting cage in, right?
Sure.
Is there like a different process or can we just do that? And I know you kind of touched on it a little bit, and the memo that was in the packet was the one that Mr. Boyle had, had sent to residents. It's not, you would send something else separate though, but I don't know if the board got that.
That, that is the memo that the town received as well. That was the notice to property owners about the proposed district. The, what I did, I also included a list of what's considered a regulated activity and a non-regulated activity in, in the sense of the historic district guidelines. And so regulated activities are new construction, demolition, removal of or addition to basically any of these elements in a historic district, if it's in public view. And that includes outbuildings, sheds, barns, garages, things of that nature. Includes architectural elements of those buildings. And also includes some site features such as driveway areas, parking areas. And those, those do exist currently on the property. They're going to look at styles of lighting fixtures. Retaining walls or fences, things like that. And.
So, I, I, I mean, if you look at this list, it's quite extensive, right? So it is including, it would include a batting cage, it would include, you know, if we were wanting to put solar panels and, and put a solar farm in the space. Or, so it is not just like a house or it's going to impact anything we do at that property. And it would impact, I'm assuming, if there's roadway entrances, you know, because one of the things we've talked about is an alternate exit for the surf club at one point. And I would assume that would impact how, does it, you know, any changes we, we would make to that. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't support this, but I'm just saying it will factor into some decisions the town might make with Lowry Field.
It, it, they would be considered regulated activities.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that they're prohibited, but they do require a certificate of appropriateness prior to implementing those improvements. Also to note, along that section of Boston Post Road, that is a scenic road, a state scenic road. And so improvements such as curb cuts and things within the state right-of-way are also subject to a review process through that scenic road advisory committee as well. That doesn't include private property, so within the town's property, but it will include any changes within the actual right-of-way of Boston Post Road.
What's the implication if we decide not to participate in the historic district?
I, I think that's where Tom can speak to. My understanding is that this property is a link to connect the district to those along the eastern and the western boundaries who have an interest in participating. Tom, are you there?
Say something at some point.
I think so. So, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, there you are. Hi, Tom.
So, hi, so Erin, Erin described that very, very well, I must say. We've been working on this for a very long time. I'm not sure I could have described the, the, the procedure that we went through better than she did. But the, the question on the table now is because we have lost, in other words, properties to the north of Lowry Field are not going to be included in the, in the district because they have opted out. They've said, no, we don't, we don't want to be in here. Because of that, we can't, we have to make the, the district contiguous. It's got to go from A, point A to point B. We can lose a few on one side of the street, but if we lose on the other side, and this is Lowry Field, on the south side, then the, the district would basically stop there. So what that means to the district is if the town says, no, no, this is something we can't do, then we would, we would lose about twenty-five or twenty-six properties to the west of Lowry Field. And the district would then be instead of about forty-two properties, more like fourteen or fifteen. So obviously, we don't want that to happen. We want to get everybody that we can into the district. And these are people that have, have expressed a desire to be in the district. It's not that, that we're pushing them. They, they've pretty much to the west of Lowry Field, they they are in favor, or at least have not provided any indication that they're not in favor. So the, the other question that let me just address for a second in.
Before, before you continue, can you just, can you just comment though? So these twenty-seven homes that you're talking about, and, and this is really more for the public, can you just comment on the benefit? You know, of becoming a part of this historic district?
Absolutely. It's, it's a part of, it's really being part of a neighborhood. And it's being part of a very unique neighborhood, one of the few historic neighborhoods along the Post Road and the state of Connecticut. There's only one other one, it's an old line. So it's important to preserve that. And I think for that kind of cohesion and that, that neighborhood element of it is very important for them. And we, I mean, over the years, and it's been years, I must say, that we've been doing this. We've made great contacts with all, all our neighbors. So it's, it's a wonderful thing to keep the neighborhood as cohesive as it should be. And of course, to keep the antique homes in the neighborhood, and they're not all antique, but those homes, to keep them as they are and hopefully not get them demolished and something else split up. So there's lots of good reasons to, to join this, this kind of thing.
Is there any downsides?
Of course, of course there is. In other words, it's another layer, it's another layer, it's two layers. It's another layer of, of something you have to do in order to make a change to your home. And that's something that you have, you have to go to, to the building department anyway. And that's really how it triggers. If somebody pulls a permit to make a change to their home, they want to put in new windows, for instance. If they're in a local historic district, then that comes before us and we say, oh, those windows are wonderful, here's your certificate. Or could you make a change to those windows to make them more in keeping with what should be there for, for an older home? And we've never had a problem with that, people have done it nearly in every single case, actually.
Are all twenty-seven of these homes on board with becoming a part of the historic district? Have you kind of polled them all or is it, you know, are, are some in, some out? Like I just, I want to make sure that, you know, we're representing sort of all of them.
Yeah, fair enough. Those that have opted out, I have, I want to show you a list. If I can do this properly. I don't see a share for that, can you help me? I mean, just put this in front of me, maybe it'll work. You see anything?
No.
Fair enough. I can, I can talk my way through it, I just don't know how to do this. I tried it last night with my wife, I had a, I had a practice zoom, but it didn't work. I mean, it worked last night, let me just look. Okay, in any case, I can't do this easily, I don't want to take your time. So the question is, of the twenty-seven or so, and that's a rough number, homes, are they all in favor? Well, I'm a pretty good vote counter, but, but I couldn't tell you that every single person is totally in favor of it. What I can tell you is that they're going to vote. And we have to get a two-thirds majority of those who return ballots in order to make this thing happen. The other thing I can tell you is those people, and there are several, including ones that, that I wish we hadn't lost. But at the very beginning of the district, we had where the winter club is, we had lost that property, they did not want to be in it. We very unfortunately lost the, the Unitarian Church is not in it. The, the, the Slaughter's Lee home, opposite of Schoolhouse Deli is not in it, which we really wanted to have. Obviously, this is still a home. So those people that have opted out are obviously, they're not going to vote, they're not in the district at all. So that leaves that, those people that have been supportive of the district. So I can't tell you that every single person is wildly enthusiastic about it, because I, I wouldn't be, it wouldn't be shared. But I can tell you that the last public meeting we had was the sixth public meeting that took place on this thing. And those people like the Unitarian Church opted out years ago, fine. And we have, we've had a lot of change in ownership since the beginning of this too. So we had people that were very much in favor of the district and then a new owner came in, so we had to talk to them and convince them to do that.
So what's the reason though, why they're opting out is?
Yeah, mostly it's that other layer, layer of regulation that they don't want to deal with. That's really what.
For improving their property?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
I don't want to have to go through another thing. Now, the reality of that is, is we've had probably, the Historic District Commission, that is, has probably had fifty or fifty applications in the two districts that are at stamp now. We've had modifications for some, and I think a total of one application was denied out of their fifty so far. And that was for plastic fence, something they wanted to put up from there. So that, that's really the way it has worked so far with the Historic District Commission. And we've been very supportive of people making changes to their homes, and people want to make changes to their homes. But that, that really is the reason, they don't want to even think about another layer of regulation on top of them. And, and I understand that, but it's like anything else, you give up a little bit to get something else.
I appreciate your comments. It's very helpful to get the perspective on this. And I just thought it might be helpful as a board to remind us that both the strategic plan and the P O C D you know, specifically call out the preservation of town historic structures and neighborhoods. So this is something that I think from a town, we said we value a lot. The community has said it's an important part of our, you know, that we put a lot of value on this. Um, obviously, as a property owner, the town, um, we're always worried about more red tape, you know, and is it going to prohibit us from doing things down the road? You know, so this, the uh Beach and Rec Commission is going to be starting a master planning process for the surf club, the entire facility. Um, and, you know, it it, you know, it doesn't prohibit us from making changes at Lowry, and I'm not saying there's any plans due, so please, if the public is listening, but I'm just saying, we're going through a process, and maybe at one point, they decide to, you know, put some sort of structure up there, um, or put tennis courts, or put, you know, something different, some other athletic field, pickleball courts, I should probably say, right? Because everybody wants more pickleball courts. You know, that's the type of thing, I guess, we would have to go to the Historic District Commission because we want to put some pickleball courts, say, but down by Lowry. Is that something we'd have to apply to the commission and get approval for? And then the question is, you know, is a ball field considered like of historic value, I guess, is the question? And I'm assuming that's what your um conversations might be.
Well, uh, that's exactly right. And the the first thing I should tell you is that I don't think the ball field is a historic uh amenity. And therefore, it's just a, what you would come before the commission to do is to get approval to put in that ball field. We won't have a, I can't think that we'd have a lot to say about that because a ball field is a ball field. And as long as it's not, doesn't have, you know, neon signs or something that are on the floorboards, I I just can't believe that that would be anything that we would have a problem with. Now, the trigger for this is usually, like I say, a building permit. So the town would need to get a building permit for anything they do there. And then that building permit would be referred to us, and we would look at it. The other thing we do is have a a mechanism by which uh all property owners, including the town, come to us before any changes are, just while changes are being thought about. And they give us, here's what we think we're going to do, and we react to that and say, look, here are the things that we think you should do to make this thing go forward. So before you even go forward, we can have a discussion about that. But just like we did with the academy school very recently, and it was a very pleasant meeting. We had a few changes that we were the love to make, which they made, and it went forward from there. So we can do the same thing with the town on any changes they want to make to Lowry Field.
Right, okay.
Uh, Tom, I have a question about the boundary line. Why would we not want to minimize the town's exposure by moving that boundary line as far north on the property as possible in order to minimize uh any future uh required review?
Well, that would be your decision entirely, and it is perfectly okay with me. In other words, we've done this on a few properties already whereby we've said we really need you to be in this district, it's very important for continuity. I know that you're not interested in having your house be regulated. May we have some portion of the front of your property along the post road to keep it continuous? And we've done that before, we've done it as as little as twenty-five feet back from the northern boundary line. And I'd be more than happy to do that with the for the town.
So what's the minimum? Where where could we put that boundary line that uh still qualifies us as participating, but minimizes uh uh the regulatory review process? Where can we place that boundary line?
In the parking lot?
Yeah, I I think the easiest thing to do would be to move it like we have on other properties. I wish I could show you this map, um, about twenty-five feet back from the northern boundary. The reason that it needs to be back a little bit is then we run into some state issues too with with the state having control over the right of way on along the post road. We want to get beyond that. If we went twenty-five feet back, that would include, my guess is about, I don't know, ten feet or so of the actual parking lot to Lowry Field. And so there would, there might be some, some, you know, small amount of improvement you would do to that area. For instance, if you sort of, if there was a road someday that came all the way out to the post road, and you wanted to sort of gate across that road, well, that gate, of course, would be, would be something that we regulate. But other than that, I can't think of anything, any improvement that would um, and of course, nothing beyond that twenty-five feet would would have any impact at all. It wouldn't, it wouldn't have any impact on us at all.
I just hearing that, just and being, you know, putting putting my old Little League hat on for a minute, uh, uh, gosh, I, that feels better to me, just in terms of regulating than what happens at the batting cage or the the, you know, improving those dugouts or putting a new backstop up. It just seems um like, wh- why would we put that additional level of regulation if we don't need to? Um, and I'm assuming that we're all nodding our heads that this would stay a ball field, so.
Yeah, I think, I think just knowing, we all, and and the public also understands there's still a lot of processes that people have to go through um to get, you know, to move forward with projects. And I think um um also knowing that we're going through this master planning process. So I would hate for us to put us in a precarious position where we took an action that then would prohibit somehow something that, you know, um, the public would want uh done to that property. Um, but I do feel the spirit, we want to keep, you know, supporting the creation of the district. So I'm comfortable, um, you know, with an adjusted property line to keep us a part of the district um, and just having it be at a minimally invasive twenty-five feet within the property, I guess.
Same.
I agree with that, and it's supportive to those other members of the community that want to be included in that project. And, you know, it sounds like anything, if we were going to make any cuts for new roadways or anything, we'd already be regulated through the scenic uh scenic roadway type of regulation. So I agree that this more minimal frontage uh would be an agreeable situation.
So I guess with with that, then, um, you know, maybe I could amend the motion, because obviously, we still have to, I I guess I have to vote on behalf of the town, correct? So um, I could amend the motion to say, discuss and take action or to approve uh the con- inclusion of Lowry Field in the Olm Street Local Historic District at a property line uh, at a property line to be determined in consultation with the town planner?
It it would be the the boundary of the proposed southern boundary of the district.
Okay.
Be no more than twenty-five feet from the northern property line.
Okay, hopefully, Jeannie got that. I'll I'll uh include Erin's comments into my amended motion. And second that, okay? And I think that that would be great. And then you now, because you said the voting, you got to know soon, right, Tom? In terms of your.
Revised report uh into actually you, the Board of Selectmen, E T C D, and um the town clerk on Thursday. So everything else has been done, I'm just waiting for this one. I'll make, I'll make that change to the map. And um Jane Sexton, who is the consultant who did all this work, will put it in. And then you will see very soon the uh the revised report, which will contain a property line twenty-five feet back of that northern boundary.
Okay, great. So I guess um with that amended motion, um, including Erin's comments, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Tom. I mean, I think it's exciting that, I know there were a lot of concerns by residents when we talked about zoning and everything else, about preserving that corridor and how beautiful it is and special it is in Madison. And I think the fact that you commented that it's one of the few in the entire state now that's not developed on Route One in that way with a lot of antique homes. I think it's, I'm excited that this can move forward, so um, all right, well, thank you for that, and.
Thanks very much, and I I do appreciate it. And um, this is the end of a very long process, so we're happy to be here.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. All right, great. Well, and kind of following on that, um, uh, I want to welcome uh the Chair of Planning and Zoning, Carol Snow, and she just wanted to kind of talk to us for a few minutes about, first of all, the upcoming housing forum and also the process for zoning regulations moving forward. Because I think this is going to be a big conversation within the community. And I also want to make sure that we, as a board, are involved in that conversation and make sure that we kind of express our views about how, what improvements can be made with uh zones. So Carol, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about your housing forum?
Sure, thank you, Peggy, and good morning, everybody. Um, thanks for having me. Yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission is really excited about hosting a public forum on housing at our next meeting, which is February twentieth. It's being held at the Senior Center at seven P M, um, seven to eight thirty, where we'll have, we hope to have good public um attendance by Madison residents because what the purpose of this forum really is, is to, is for us to hear what people think we need in Madison for housing. And um, the Planning and Zoning Commission is following up again on the Plan of Conservation and Development, the Strategic Plan, and the Affordable Housing Plan. Um, this was initiated by Erin, so Erin, feel free to um contribute as needed. Um, and we've, we've, we're working with Scrog Consultants, David and Ben Fink, to help us facilitate the process. Um, and so at this first meeting, we hope to just get a lot of feedback from the public about what kind of housing they think Madison needs, not just affordable housing, but middle housing, um, different kinds of housing options, you know, whether it's higher density, cluster housing, multifamily housing units. Um, I want to just follow up as a historic preservation plug for, you know, adaptable, adaptable reuse of historic properties as well. Um, and, you know, we're, we want to hear from residents about what we should build, where we can build it. Um, and we also have formed a consortium, a sort of informal consortium, working with the Affordable Housing Committee and the Economic Development Commission, and we hope to get the Board of Selectmen to join us, as many of you who can um participate, that'd be great, and move forward with these priorities that we've all, we've all agreed are important to the town of Madison. Anything else, Erin, that you want, you want to add to that?
With that, um, with that particular, that the your housing forum, with that, um, are you guys going to put out a blast or something to the town as well? Obviously, it'll be on the town calendar and all that. I just, we've been getting a bunch of questions, interestingly enough, about housing options and who can I talk to about the affordable options in town? And so I I, I mean, I think the timing is perfect, um, but I think we just want to make sure people know about it.
Right, I mean, I want to give a shout out to Peggy for including it in her last Friday's announcements about, you know, what's going on in Madison in the town. Um, we've got a flyer that's being distributed, Erin, I'm not sure how widely distributed it has been. I know we've got.
Probably not just Scott's house.
But we have a, we have a.
Can you bring one over? Check email these days.
Yeah, exactly.
We do have a huge spreadsheet with a lot of lengths of um people and organizations in town who have been identified by the Affordable Housing Committee, by, you know, economic development, um, religious groups in town, and, you know, I think, Erin, anybody else that I'm missing? But we we are trying to distribute as widely as we can, as you can see. It doesn't always get to everybody, but um, I don't know if there'll be a a plug in the newspaper.
I I mean, I, hopefully, a plug in the newspaper, I I was getting, will ramp up. I what I've learned, at least, uh, a lot of people don't focus on anything until like a week out. So we will be ramping up information about this in terms of using the town platforms as well. Uh, we do have a new communications manager that just started with us yesterday, so we were a little bit in transition the last month. Um, so, but we will um push it for you. Um, and I think that it can be very effective, you know, when we, when we do that. Um, and I think that, you know, the town, we've had all these different things going on the last couple of years. Carol highlighted, right? The Plan of Conservation, the Affordable Housing Plan, the Strategic Plan. And, you know, really, one of the most powerful tools that we have to make change relating to housing is through zoning. And so I think that's why really kind of now, really, you know, rolling up our sleeves a little bit more in a more detailed fashion and talking about zoning regulations and how it impacts housing. And there's the affordable piece, which we all know about, and the Affordable Housing Committee has spent a lot of time kind of um analyzing and reviewing about, you know, there's that, you know, affordable in terms of capital A that has kind of certain um definitions around it. But I think more broadly, it's this housing choice issue. And there are a lot of people in town who want to have other options, people who are downsizing, younger families moving to town, who aren't necessarily going to qualify for, you know, deed restricted housing, which is, for example, what Wellington is. But they just want better choice in town. They want to be able to find something that suits their lifestyle. They're no longer a a needed, you know, three thousand square foot house, their families have left, where they have other needs. Um, and then, on the other hand, you know, we struggle with open spaces part of our P O C D and our strategic plan. You know, people enjoy us being a small-town feel, they don't want urbanization. There's kind of a concern about too much density. And then we have all this infrastructure challenges that prohibits us from having a lot of density. So it's very complicated, and I don't think there's going to be one solution to any of this. But the zoning regulations can help ease that a little bit and kind of maybe open up the doors to think about housing in a little different way than what we've done in the past. And so I think it will be really good for the public to really, you know, express what they want to see aloud in town um, as, you know, the Planning and Zoning goes through this zoning uh review. Um, and how can we facilitate what we want and make it easier versus having to have these contentious zoning discussions and process that we go through, right? Um, so it is going to be a hard conversation on one side, but I think there's going to be a lot of good things that come out of this process. Um, so I'm excited to see it move forward. And and I'm glad, Carol, that you, and I know you've been in in close contact with the Affordable Housing Committee, you're going to be partnering on a lot of this to, you know, really make sure that we we take some real uh i- impactful, I guess, steps to for, to make progress. Because we all know that we don't, you know, we have, I was just looking at the strategic plan, you know, we have these goals, so now it's kind of the implementation phase, right? What can we do to achieve those goals? And so zoning reg- reform or regulation updates is part of that process.
Carol, I'm delighted that you're asking the public uh for for their views on this. What are the developers trying to say to our zoning process? What would they like to see?
Well, actually, that's a, that's a great question, because we want to include them as well. And um, and and I think we'll be working with a group of, you know, reputable, good developers who have done good affordable housing projects that are beautiful and, you know, that have really enhanced different communities in our neighbor, you know, our neighboring towns. Um, so they'll be part of the process as well, as well. I don't know if any of them are coming to our first forum on the twentieth of February. I hope so, but um, our link to them is through Scrog and through the consultants, Ben and David Fink, who are working with us. Um, so they've, you know, they they can at least address that issue at the forum if there are no developers actually present. But we want to, we want to work with developers as well, obviously, to make it happen.
Thank you. I I've been in contact with um both some market rate developers as well as um some who have experienced doing affordable, deed restricted affordable housing um, and extended an invite for them to join us. Um, and some are attending. I have gotten confirmation from some of them, so that it will be, it will be a nice group of varied stakeholders there.
Okay, well, I um, I think, you know, we will be checking in more. Um, and I think it would be good for our board to have a conversation, um, you know, the next couple of months where we focus on this issue from ourselves, like what do we want to express to Planning and Zoning? Um, you know, what would we like to see come out of this? And and understanding this is like a multifaceted approach, right? And you have to listen to everything, but we've been through all these planning processes now. And I feel like we need to kind of give you guys some more substantive direction, I guess, not, you know, or or just recommendations. Um, and so we'll try to figure out how we want to do that over the next couple of months as you start your process, okay?
Great, thanks. I just want to ask one more request from the Board of Selectmen. Um, we're in need of facilitators for our forum, and we would love it if any of the board members could join us. And um, I think we have ten tables planned for this meeting, and we've got seven facilitators so far. So if anyone else would like to volunteer and come join us, that would be, that would be terrific.
It's not a lot of pressure, just just some small breakout groups for conversations, that's all. I do intend to be there, so I'll be able to help with that.
Oh, great, thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
All right, thank you very much, and uh we will move on. Thanks, Carol, for coming out. Um, okay, item number fifteen is just an update from our Human Resources Director. You know, we've had some uh just personnel updates, and then we'll be going into executive session to deal, to just discuss some labor issues. So um, if, Deb, if you want to join us for a few minutes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey.
So I'm sorry, Peggy, I was being joined as.
So I'm sorry, Peggy, I was being joined as a panelist. Could you just repeat what you, what you asked me because it muted for a minute?
Uh, no, just if you want to give a brief update on, uh, you know, any new employees joining us. And then, um, we'll probably go to citizens' comments, and then we'll go to an executive session to talk specifically about, uh, uh, contract negotiations, um, in an executive session. But I thought if you want to give just a quick update.
Well, we have two new police officers that just started about three weeks ago, and they're both in the academy. So Chief Drum is extremely excited about that. Um, we just hired a communication and social media manager, just started yesterday, and her name is Madison. So we made it really easy for you. We have a Madison working in Madison. So, uh, she should be ramping up and, and onboard soon. She's going to be meeting with all the department heads to see what their, um, needs are for each of the departments, for social media, for communications, and then obviously working very closely with Peggy in the First Select Woman's office. We also hired a program coordinator, which is replacing Ellie Gillespie, who relocated out of state, and she retired from the town of Madison. And that new program coordinator started yesterday also. So it was a busy day here in Madison for two new employees. And, uh, she will be working at the Senior Center with Heather and Austin. So they're very excited about that, too.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
And, uh, the good thing that we've had multiple candidates also apply through these different, um, you know, so we feel there's been a little bit of a shift. I think a year ago it was really hard to hire, um, in, in municipalities. Madison has never, I would say, been as challenged as maybe as other towns. We obviously are a great place to work and, um, you know, competitive from a salary and benefit standpoint. But, um, um, it's great that when we see a lot of qualified candidates apply. So it's always a tough decision, um, when you have that. Um, so just glad that we can move forward, uh, uh, you know, filling those vacant positions. I do want to highlight the communications manager position was, we had an in-house person doing it, and they decided to move on to other things. So, um, this isn't a, a recent, it was added to the budget, uh, starting July first. And then the person that was in there, that we had transitioned in-house into the position has left. And so this is just a replacement for that. So any other questions for, uh, Deb? No? Okay, so we'll move on to citizens' comments, and then we'll go into executive session, um, after that. So, uh, please, uh, we'll move to citizens' comments.
Go ahead, Maureen.
Um, please state your name and address and, um, and limit your, uh, comments to two minutes, please.
My name is Maureen Lopes, twenty-five Old Farms Road in Madison. And I just wanted to call attention today to, um, I, I recognize the importance of looking at the dollar amounts that are being affected by what's happening in D C. But I went looking yesterday particularly for what position Madison and statements have been made about protecting children in schools from federal agents, uh, showing up, uh, how our police are handling any of these kinds of, um, arrivals in town, um, our library, those kinds of things. Other towns have been more forthcoming and, uh, and visible about what stance and what their referral is to, um, different existing laws within Connecticut. So I would really encourage the Board of Selectmen to be, I couldn't find anything on the, um, uh, the school board website about privacy of, um, students in immigration status, for example, uh, or, or an existing procedure. Those may have been in place for a while. So I'm, um, I think it's really important. None of us are in a bubble anymore. We may have thought we were at one point, but as we could see this morning, it's all filtering down. And, uh, I want to make sure our citizens, our neighbors, our children are protected and that the laws of Connecticut, as well as the federal level, are being protected. Thank you.
Thanks, morning.
Thank you, um.
Go ahead, Matt Gordon.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So, um, first of all, I want, I want to say I'm very excited to, oh, I'm sorry, Matt Gordon, thirty-four Lenore Drive, um, speaking on, as a, as a private citizen today. So I'm very happy to hear about the two police officers that are in, uh, academy right now. That's a big win for Madison. Um, I do want to say that I'm very disappointed with the lack of deliberation between the Democrat B O S members and the Republican B O S members on the appointment for Madison Youth and Family Services. The subject was clearly decided outside of communication with Jen and Bruce, based on their statements today. The First Select Woman speaks of unaffiliated being penalized in our current political system. Uh, unaffiliations can be interviewed by the Board of Selectmen and considered for filling seats. These two applicants that were voted on today went through the Madison D T C, just for clarity. I like to revisit the idea of unaffiliated as well. Did the Democrat Board of Select Members consider that one of the applicants that was voted on today used to work for Madison Youth and Family Services? And that one of the applicants today had donated to a progressive liberal, uh, political action committee twice last year? There's nothing wrong with that, but with unaffiliated, I think that this should have come up with deliberations amongst all Board of Selectmen members. One selectman here today says that these two are more qualified, but he offers zero evidence. It's a shame, you know, when I look at the Board of, I'm sorry, the, uh, Madison Youth and Family Services website right now, the first page talks about the opioid crisis, uh, battling opioids, the funding coming through. And Lisa, clearly, has been stated before, this is what she does. I mean, she's worked with John Michael Parker at Capitol Hill on this. Um, she is very qualified. So I'm wondering what that evidence is to the Board of Selectmen statement. Um, you did have an op, uh, an opportunity today to do what was right, uh, to choose Lisa and another person, not to bar Lisa out of the conversation. I do ask the Democrat Board of Selectmen members to vote independently and for what is right for Madison going forward. Thank you.
There are no other hands raised. No other hands raised. All right, thank you for public comments. I appreciate the open dialogue today. And, um, I guess I'd like to get a motion to move into executive session and invite Deb Ferranti and Jeannie Stevenson to that, uh, meeting.
So moved.
Okay, great, all in favor? And just for the public, we'll, all in favor, say aye. Uh, just for the public benefit, there will be no further conversation. Once we come out of executive session, no votes taken, the meeting will just be adjourned. So with that, let's move into executive session. Thank you. Unlocked in your back recording. Okay, great. Well, thank you for the conversation and hearing no objection. This meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.